On to the December 19th Planning Board meeting. We are having some technical difficulties with our front on camera. So unfortunately, we only can present from behind the board. And maybe you can see a little bit of us, but let's keep going. First thing we do is review the approved the meeting minutes from previous meeting, November 14. We've paid a few bills. We acted on three resolutions. The Loftus Hill and Tam Wetlands Resolution, an extension of the White Conditional Final Approval Resolution, and the SH-29 Westneck LLC, again, an extension resolution. I think it all looks in order. Do you guys have any questions?
No, that's good.
I make a motion to accept.
Go ahead.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a bunch of bills tonight. Two from the Times Review Media Group, both for public notices, advertising public notices. First was $61.92 for the Flower Wetlands application, public hearing. And the second is for $55.16 for the Borough Hall Daniel Lord Road lot line adjustment. So both of these are necessary for us. So I make a motion to approve the Times Review Media Group invoices that total $117.08.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next two are for the Reiner Group. The Reiner Group Professional Services provided in the month of November. They break it down into subdivisions and wetlands. Subdivision Lot Line Modification invoice totaled $206.25 and dealt primarily with the Borough Hall Daniel Lord Road application. The Wetlands application totals $742.50, and it dealt with the Flower, mostly the Flower Wetlands application, and then a little more on 169 Ram Island Drive and a little bit on 58 West Moreland Drive. But these are always very helpful. And so I make a motion to accept the November invoices from the Reiner Group totaling $948.75.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last invoice we have for the night is from EHA, again, for Professional Services in the month of November. It totals $2,666.33. That's for drafting the Ram 169 Ram Island Wetlands Resolution. Work on White and 29 SH Westneck Extension Resolutions, prepping for the public notices for the 6 Daniel Lord Road and 10 Chequid Wetlands, 6 Daniel Lord Road Lot Line Adjustment and the 10 Chequid Wetlands Permit, and attending, attending the meeting. And I think service is very much needed and valuable, so I make a motion to accept the EHA November invoice for Professional Services in the amount of $2,666.33. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two public hearings tonight. The first is for 6 Daniel Lord Road LLC and 3 Borough Hall Lane LLC. I will read the public notice. Notice hereby given that the Shelter Round Town Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM prevailing time on December 19, 2023, in the Shelter Round Town Hall, Shelter Round New York, at which time all interested parties shall be heard regarding the application of 6 Daniel Lord Road LLC and 3 Borough Hall Lane LLC, where a lot line modification of lands purportedly owned by them located in the A Residence District bounded on the east by Westneck Road and on the west by Westneck Creek, which parcels, parcels are identified on the Suffolk County Tax Map as parcels number 718-219, lot, we'll call him this one Lot 19, and 714-260.10, known as Lot 60.10. The application proposes to transfer .4126 acres of land from Lot 60.10 to Lot 19 and 3.7355 acres of land from Lot 19 to Lot 60.10. As a result, the lot area of Lot 19 will decrease from, from approximately 22.85 acres to 20.02 acres, also known as 994,753 square feet, to 8,702.52 square feet. And the lot area of Lot 60.10 will increase from approximately .92 acres to 30.74 acres, 40,019 square feet, to approximately 162,720 square feet. The public notice had a slight variation in the area calculations that do not affect this notice, and we are proceeding with the, the public hearing.
I'll just, just to follow up, because we use the words approximately, that still covers the notice. So I think we're still, the board still has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight. I also received the affidavit of service and posting for this application. Everything looks to be in order.
So I believe John Wagner is here, representing the homeowner, the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm John Wagner from the law firm Settleman Ballin, Atherton, Hyman, offices at 100 Motor Parkway, Hough, New York, representing the applicants tonight. We went through the, the numbers a bit to start with. We labored the point on the numbers, but as is appropriate for lot line adjustment application, we'll be seeking to adjust the line between two existing lots. It's actually a give and take on this particular application, it's a little bit going one way and a little bit going the other way. But we end up, at the end of the day, with what we call Lot 1 being reduced in size from 22.84 acres to 20.2 acres. The bulk, the bulk of that change is the acreage that's being transferred to Lot 2, which is the 3 Borough Hall Lane parcel. And also, the 3 Borough Hall Lane parcel itself starts off at, at only .92 acres, but increases in size to 3.74 acres after all is said and done. It's a fairly straightforward application. I can tell you that apart from what we're doing with this board, we've also made separate applications to Suffolk County Department of Health Services. They consider even lot line adjustments to be a subdivision in their, in their world. So an application for subdivision was made. I just learned this afternoon that the Health Department appears to be satisfied with all of our submissions. They have only two requirements from us. One is they would like a copy of the secret determination from this board, and, and the second thing they would like are four prints so they can put signatures on it. So I think we're pretty much done here. You have any questions for me or for the applicant?
Secret deterrent, secret is type 2. It's a lot line adjustment.
Is it type 2?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Right. So we will inform the Suffolk County Department of Health Services.
Right? Right? Yeah. Right. Okay. Remembering that correctly?
Anyone have any questions?
It's a very straightforward, and once we gotten, once we got everything cleaned up a little bit, there was some questions on some things, but once we got through all that, the actual lot line is very straightforward.
I think.
I think.
Problems for me?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone have any questions on Zoom for Mr. Wagner or for the board on this application? On that condition, let's close this public hearing and move on to the next, which is for the Flower residence at 10 Chequid Avenue. We did get notice from the applicant that their sign flew away on Sunday or Saturday night. We do have an affidavit of, of posting which indicated the sign went up, was put up on the 7th of December, so it seems to have been in advance. Considering that we are going to open the public hearing and immediately adjourn it because we do not have the CAC comments, I think this is okay. We just ask the applicant to get another sign and put it up for the, for the month, just so people know that it's active. But they've done all their mailings, so I don't think there's any way, reason to delay this, this public portion of the public hearing and make them renotice and readvertise and all that.
This was due to the storm, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's the email we got. So, so let me read the public notice. Notice hereby given that the following hearing will be held by the Shelter Round Planning Board on the 19th day of December 2023, in person at the Shelter Round Town Hall, 38 North Ferry Road, Shelter Round, New York. Applications are scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. A public hearing regarding an application for a wetlands permit by Anthony Flowers, Anna Maria Flower. The property which is subject of the application is located at 10 Chequid Avenue, Shelter Island, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 70532.005. The applicants are requesting a wetland permit, one, add a new 40 square foot, a new, new 40 square feet of stairs and a platform on the west side of the house. Two, raise existing single family dwelling to comply with current FEMA blood elevation requirements. Three, enclose existing 132 square foot front porch. Four, construct new 196 square foot roadside entry steps. Five, remove existing 621 square foot water side deck and walkways. Six, construct new 734 square feet water side deck and stairs. This is secret class type 2. The subject application is available for review at the Office of the Shelter Round Planning Board and on the Planning Board's website. All persons wishing to be heard should appear at the aforementioned time and place. So as I mentioned, we do not have the CAC, Conservation Advisory Council's memo. They did not have a quorum last month, so we are going to adjourn this to January 16. Do I have to vote on that, or does it just make the adjournment statement?
I think you make a, you'd vote.
Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn this.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that brings us, we're done with the public hearings. So we're, we close the business meetings, move on to the work session agenda. We have four applications in front of us. The Bloom Minor Subdivision, they have until January 11, 2024, to submit the final application. I haven't heard of any progress on their grants or on their being able to connect to the Westneck Water Authority, so I will have to reach out to the applicant and see what's going on. SH-29 Westneck LLC Lot Line Adjustments, it still says waiting on the deeds, but I thought we reviewed the deeds.
Sorry, they have to record them, I believe.
So we're just waiting on the recording?
Yeah.
And they have till January 8, 2024 to do so. The next one, White Roadway Construction. Joe, you wrote a brief memo. They seem mostly done. Do you want to bring this up quickly in speed and see what's, what they've done?
Yeah, they've pretty much finished construction of the artist lane or the portion of artist lane that goes into the property and terminates at the access to the public parking area. That has been, that's also been constructed. The work all seems in order. The plantings were done in accordance with the planting plan. One exception, in, in one area where they're supposed to have 10 arbor by the, they only have nine, but the tent is there. It's bald and burlapped and it's just sitting on the ground. So maybe it got dark one day and they just couldn't finish, and they haven't been back to do it. So that, that was one minor issue. The other one was, when they were constructing the road, it's typical practice, you put filter fabric on top of the drainage inlets to keep debris from getting in there. They haven't removed it. So in order to get the drainage to, to work properly in storms, they have to remove the filter fabric. Neither of those are a big item. The last thing had to do with monuments. This portion of the subdivision required 10 monuments. They have not been put in yet. There was some back and forth. The, the surveyor who worked on the subdivision is Nate Corwin, and the town, when they purchased some of the lots, had a title survey done by Michael Hemmer. So Michael Hemmer put some monuments in, but had nothing to do with the subdivision or the roadway. It's, it had to do with monumenting the lots that the town has purchased. So those 10 monuments that are associated with the roadway still have to be installed. I contacted Karen Hoag, the attorney, let her know, prepared a little sketch with the, the 10 monuments highlighted, and sent it to them. She's going to get in touch with Michael, with Nate, and get him out there to do it. And she wants to try to get all that done. She, she knows she has until January 9th, so she's going to try to get everybody out there, the arbor by the planted, you know, the filter fabric removed.
Be great to finish this one up.
It seems very close. It's a day's work away.
I was down there yesterday, the rain, and it, it drained really nicely, which wasn't true about many places on the sun.
Thank you, Joe. So the last application in front of us, 6 Daniel Lord Road LLC and 3 Borough Hall LLC Lot Line Adjustment. We just had the public hearing. I guess we can wrap the resolution for next month?
The board wants to discuss it.
Is there anything you guys want to talk about?
It's pretty straightforward. I mean, when you very first worked at it, it was pretty daunting, you know, what's going on here? But then, once you understood it, and Joe's memo was very helpful.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a better situation now, you've got, you know, a smaller lot that's a bigger lot.
That's interesting. I think the, again, there was, there was some weirdness at the beginning when we didn't know about some ownership, and there were some old things that, once that all got clarified, it's a very straightforward, to me at least.
I can't think of any special conditions that are needed for this application, that's The only thing, I'll repeat, I've done this in email form in the past, we will, we can review, pass the resolution, review the deeds, and record them, but I, I will not sign the plat until we have the final Health Department sign off. So we've started that as a policy going forward. Even the one application that was reached out to by someone working around the base, base the application that we approved a year or two years ago, and they're all confused because the Health Department hasn't recognized it. They clearly, we warned them, said you have to go to the Health Department, current, current with this. We hadn't, we signed our plats, they were recorded, but no one did anything at the Health Department, so now this applicant is delayed having to go through that process. So I think this is the, the right way of proceeding on these lot line adjustments.
They seem to be on top of it already, which is great. Shouldn't be a problem.
Matt Sherman is here, and he had some questions. I got an email this morning from him about the two lot line adjustments that will be coming in for us in upcoming months, one between the Elliott Bousman and another one on Silver Beach. Matt, do you want to ask the board what your questions are?
Yeah, thank you, Ian. The first one is the Elliott, Elliott Bousman Lot Line Change over on South Midway Road. We talked about it last month, and the board had suggested that I look into some of the, the historic zoning and town code issues with respect to the, what the subdivision process was when this thing was first started back in 85, and then when the, the, the property first changed, and then, and I believe it was 98, when it, it got to the current configuration that it is now. And then looking at the historic code, the subdivision code didn't have anything to address lot line changes up through 2020, 2002, excuse me. And then in 2004, a section came in under the Minor Subdivision category for a lot line change adjustment, and it references a local law from 2004. So that's the, the, it looks like the current practice of, of reviewing and approving lot line changes started in 2004. So several years after this thing was, over on South Midway Road, was, was started and finished. There is one other thing, one other avenue we're looking at, is to see if the initial split of what at that time was 12 South Midway Road, that initial split which occurred in 1985, it created a one acre parcel and a .6 acre parcel, if that was done just as a matter of split, or if it was done with the, with a variance, zoning board of appeals variance. We have nothing indicating that it was, but we're just going at it just to make sure that that one last possible loose end is tied up. So what my question is for the board then, is since the lot line change process had not occurred, or was not a process until 2004, all of this stuff happened in the 80s and 90s. If you guys have a suggestion or a strategy for basically getting an acknowledgement from the town so that we can move forward with the Health Department, excuse me, and continue with the lot line change application that we're currently doing from them? Because there, as, as Mr. Wagner had pointed out earlier, the Health Department treats lot line changes and subdivisions all the same. So they're, they're looking at anything that changed after 1981 as having to go through their office. So regardless of what the town did or when they did it, this still has to go through the Health Department as an after the fact approval.
The 85 split, though, created the two lots, 76.1, 76.2, but our subdivision code says we can't make a, a lot without frontage. So.
That was, that led to my next question, which was, did it occur through the ZBA in the anticipation of that .6 acres that didn't have frontage were merged with, with their Beth's house over on Joy Drive? And then it took 10 years or so, or no, yeah, I guess 10 years or so for that merge to occur. That, that is exactly the question that I was asking.
We're, we're having a hard time. You're, you almost, you almost went chipmunk on us. Do you, you want to try logging out and booting back in quickly? See if that remedies it?
Is that any better where I'm at now?
Maybe you turn off your video. See?
How about that? Now I'm better with no video?
Oh, no worse.
It's, it's good to know that I don't sound better when you can't see. All right, I'm gonna log out, I'll log back in.
Thank you.
Sounds like something's competing.
But he was also coming in a little low. I don't know if you guys, I was having trouble hearing him, just initially.
I mean, I'd have to really rely on Joe and Beth on this, on what, how to.
This is out of my purview.
I think we can, when he comes back on, we can.
So, you know, in the 85 split, those two lots were one lot, they created a lot, lot with no frontage. To me, that's, even back then, probably wasn't legal.
It's a wetlands lot, like that's all apart.
So is this just done? And it just happened and?
He's still not sure.
Yeah, that, I'm, I'm back in. Is that any better?
That's much better, yeah.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, so just to kind of recap real quick again, excuse me, 1985, 1.6 acres at 12 South Midway Road was split. We had one section, a, a one acre section, and then that .6 acre section. It is waterfront, but all of the development is way on the roadside, so several hundred feet from the water. And so that occurred in 1985. Then in, I believe it was 98, but I'd have to double check that, the, another lot line change occurred and a merging of that .6 acre parcel with the bountage parcel over on Joy Drive. So when, from the beginning in 1984, when we had the two separate lots to what we are now in 2023, 2024, that it, it basically turned into a two lot, lot line change, but there was a subdivision that occurred in the middle there. And that subdivision should have gone through the planning board unless it went through the zoning board of appeals. And I've, I put in a FOIL request this morning to the town to see if there was any, any ZBA application done in the, you know, 1984, 1985 timeframe by the then owner to see if it was approved that way. If it wasn't approved that way, then I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how it occurred, other than just they filed it with the county clerk and the county clerk didn't double check or, or, you know, something fell through the cracks at the, you know, at that level that didn't send it back to the town planning board.
Which is a definite possibility.
Yeah.
I've had, I have seen that happen in other municipalities as well, where people just filed deeds and the county didn't pick up on it or wasn't, you know, and, and now these lot, there's a separate tax map lot created, however, they never went through any review process, so. Yeah, I mean, I think in the, as far as the 85, that, that first split, it would have to comply with all zoning at the time.
Not, it did not.
Unless there was some sort of variance, like you were saying.
See what you, I guess, see what you find with the.
But you would have still needed planning board review in 85 because you went from one lot to two, correct?
Well, no, because in the, in the 85 code, the code that was in place at the time, there's an explicit exception where it says that the planning board will not review a, a lot line, a subdivision approved by the ZBA. And how did they word it? Let me see here. It, it was kind of a little, I thought awkward wording, at least awkward from my understanding.
So that means they would have had to go on the ZBA. As you're saying, they were, the only exception for planning board not doing a review would be, is that they went to the ZBA, so they had to have gone to the ZBA.
Right.
They ditched it.
Right.
Yeah, so what the code said was, unless it was approved with a dimensional variance from the ZBA, then the planning board, then the, the subdivision section of the code, chapter 111, would not apply. So it's basically a, it either goes to the ZBA for this dimensional variance, or it goes to the planning board as a two lot subdivision, one or the other.
This term dimensional variance, what's that?
So if you don't meet the lot, so if the minimum lot area was one acre, so if minimum lot area, area was one acres, it was a 1.6 acre lot, they created one, one acre lot, and then they created a .6 acre lot. That .6 acre lot doesn't meet the minimum lot size, so you would need a variance from the zoning board to create a lot that doesn't meet the minimum lot size.
So I, I think we're waiting to hear then what you get back from your FOIL request.
Yeah. Yeah, so then, you know, assuming, let's hope that the ZBA approved it, but I'm, I, I think that there was no ZBA application, because we've done other FOIL requests and, and, and the town has looked for records and we haven't found them. This is kind of like our, our last shot at it, assuming that that's not the case and it was just something. Assuming that that's not the case, and it was just something, as we've mentioned earlier, a, you know, set of deeds was filed with the county and it just never filtered down to the town level. Now we've got these two separate properties that are in essence a lot line change between what was the original properties. Should we treat it as a, a after the fact lot line change approval with the board? As if it were happening today?
It would have to go through current standards.
Yeah, yeah. And we could, we can meet all the current standards, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically having, going back to the 80, 81 map and then starting the whole process from that point.
Right, exactly.
I would think, yeah, the same thing that probably you'd have to go through with the Health Department, which is, you know, whatever that.
And what's the Health Department? What's the configuration the Health Department has?
Oh, they're, they're fine with it, the way that we're proposing it, and they've got that original 19, they've, their map, they either go to the original 1981 map or or the whatever, you know, they may have approved in the meantime. So they've got the, you know, they've got the current tax map that shows it the same way the town shows it the same way that we're trying to get it approved to right now, but they don't recognize that because they don't have that subsequent approval through their office.
So the last approval at their office level, they would have is the 81 map, you're saying?
Yeah, that's their default starting point, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if they don't have something, they go back to 81. So whatever that 81 map says, it's where they start.
So I think you have a pathway now. We'll see what the, you get from the ZBA and take it from there.
Yeah, I appreciate it. All right, good. And the.
You have another one?
The Silver Beach one, and it really, it's just more of a strategic question for you all. It's two undersized lots, you know, it's a, a one acre zoning out there in this area, it's a zone. Neither one of them, one is 36,000 square feet, the other one's like 10,000, 9,000 square feet, something to that effect. They want to take a section off of the the larger lot and move it to the smaller lot. So they're both still going to be nonconforming, one a little bit less nonconforming and one a little bit more nonconforming. And I'm assuming that that should go to the ZBA before coming to you guys. But I just wanted to double check. I didn't want to, you know, get ahead of myself and and put in an application to one board when it really should be going to the other one first.
Yeah, we're not allowed to create a nonconforming lot. And so increasing the nonconformity of the 36 to 32 would still be an issue.
Forming, yeah.
So I should go to the ZBA first on that then?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Do you need a, is the building department going to give you a denial letter on that? Oh, you can't go straight to the ZBA, can you?
No, I wanted to talk to you guys first. I'll talk to.
You can, that's the exception in the code. I think you can go straight to the ZBI. I think there's that exception in the code that allows you, for purposes, for subdivision purposes, if you don't meet the dimensional can go straight, rather than having to seek a turn down letter, you can go straight to the ZBI.
Okay, good, perfect. That's good. That helps a lot. I appreciate that.
Hey. All set?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much for your help.
Moving on, we have three wetlands applications. The Flower application, we just adjourned. We have 58 West Moreland Drive, which you have an engineering memo on. And I am, I am the designer on this, assisting the homeowner, so I'm going to accuse myself to 28 degree weather.
36.
So a quick question about this one. Am I able to sit in the entry or do I need not looking at you guys or it warm or do I have to go completely outside? Okay.
Go chill, Coco.
Yeah.
There's candy in there. Oh, I'll never come back now.
All right, so you guys get a chance to look at the.
Yeah.
On site.
Yeah.
Joe's report.
I did.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. So I think, I think it's, you know, he's concluding, I'm ready for for a public hearing.
It seems like it should, yeah, get noticed and go ahead and. Like it made sense to me.
On site, everything that they talked about, you know, taking out the existing pool, doing the new decking, everything that they mentioned there, you can plainly see when you're on site. And there wasn't anything unusual that we saw, right? Matt, nothing?
No, it wasn't. I mean, they're getting rid of the tennis court, they're changing out the the septic. Everything is is outside of the vegetable buffer.
They're doing something.
Well.
It's outs, no, it's, it's within.
There's.
100 foot.
Almost half of them. There's nothing in the 75.
It's not in 75.
There's nothing in the 75.
But we would leave that for the, yeah.
Right. It was 481 square, square feet within the ARA. So all we need to do is set a public hearing, so.
Right.
Should I make a motion?
Motion to set it for a public.
Motion set for a public hearing, probably do it January.
Will they be able to publish it?
We do it on the 16th or?
We have time to be able to get it on for the, with the holidays and everything?
Are you going to be able to prep?
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
Be the same as our next, next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make it a, make it a fun January.
And so like, make a motion to set.
Wait, one second. Wait, are we good?
Yeah.
Just gonna double check.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks. 10 days.
Yeah. 16th is probably.
Yeah.
By the 6th?
Yeah, it should be fine. Maybe on the 16th.
When is the deadline for the submission? That Monday before?
Tuesday. Do I make that motion? It's going to be. Can we?
Okay, I can do it on Thursday.
So January 16th, good.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, for a public hearing for which, January 16th, will you get a second?
A second. All right, all right. Let's do it.
Um, that's it. He can come back in.
Just bring candy though.
There's nothing good. The bowl is red dry. Nothing good left in there.
That is a sad, sad story. Talk about the new board starting up next year. Everyone will talk about that later. For the platform. I believe it was promised.
Running for high school.
Exactly.
The third wetlands application is Michael Two Bay Avenue, and we've received Joe's memo. Joe, do you want to walk us through that briefly? And I'll just, I'm just going to interrupt one. This, there is a previous wetland application that was approved in 2022 for this. And so the DEC, the Health Department, all stems from that application. I don't know that it makes any sense, but I can, if someone wants the older memo, I can send it around. But this is a similarly scoped new project.
Same owner?
New owners.
New owners.
This is ongoing, any, you should look to see if there's any conditions in that approval.
I have to.
Carry through.
Have to get, collect that resolution from.
Yes.
Oh, they wanted a boat, a long boathouse to put a rowing shell in, and that was what everyone was struggling with. That was tonight. But I don't know if there were other conditions because they also had the gazebo and.
Well, they had a preexisting gazebo that's like prior.
So I'll have to pull a copy of the resolution. So Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. So th- this site's on the corner of Simpson Avenue, Bay Avenue, and it's a waterfront lot. So between being a corner lot and having frontage, being a waterfront lot, the buildable area is very constricted. Really not a lot of room to shift things around. So what they're, you know, what's being proposed, it's, you know, the the pool and the cabana. A really bad, the only place where they can go. You know, unless they can get some kind of, and even a variance from the front yard setbacks for the pool. There's no room then to put sanitary system or drainage from the site. So it doesn't work. So, you know, essentially what the, you know, you're looking at about the best they can do with what's being proposed. I happened to go by the site checking Artist Lane, I thought, in the area, let me just, and and it's tight.
Yeah, I've been there. I know exactly this one.
You know, the, like I said, the fact that it's only 23,000 square feet in a 40,000 square foot zone with the the constraints from the water and from the two front yards doesn't give you a lot of room to work.
The house also, at least the previous owner had a Ring camera. So when people went to visit, the police showed up. So again, let's just.
Your ID.
Because assuming the Ring camera went with the house.
When I was there last week, there was a lot of construction going on in the house. The house seems to be gutted.
Renovation.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. They jumped ahead.
I don't know, can you, could, and I was wondering if they could get a building permit to.
Do demolitions.
Demolition permit, and they could do stuff as long as they don't go beyond.
On the envelope?
Yeah, and they're not proposing anything to the existing dwelling.
Well, they're filling out, yes, they're the waterside, they're, they're taking over the area where the Bilko enclosure is. They're squaring off the house. They're doing some stoops and steps and.
Right.
Joe, just to clarify, what you're saying, you still work on the outside or would it, it would look more likely they were doing something in inside?
It seemed to be interior work. Because I didn't see anyone outside of the building, but there were, there were certainly, there were electricians and plumbers and.
The house review. It's in great shape, actually.
Yeah.
You know, sign, someone wants to look at this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind.
I can do it.
I haven't done one in a little while. I don't mind doing it.
You want to do one?
We have also two special permit applications for Five Window Road and One Pandian Road. And they're on hold pending the large house moratoriums for months. Basically, all I have for tonight, does anyone out, uh, board have something?
I just want to check, did, did you want us to go through more business call or, we kind of jumped ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we finished.
Okay, I just, I just realized you didn't actually get to finish off.
Does anyone on Zoom have any questions, comments? If that's the case, I'm going to make a motion to close the December 19th, 2023 planning board hearing.
Pam.
Oh, Pam. Hi, Pam.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Yeah, just a question, the, the public hearing that you just set for January 16th. You don't have a CAC report for that, and and you don't have one for this Two Bay Avenue either. And I'm, and I'm curious about Two Bay Avenue and why it might not require a look from the zoning board because the pool house is in the wetlands regulated area. And I don't believe that's anything that the town board has ever approved, is to put a building in that 25 foot area there. I think this might have to go to the ZBA for a look, see before you go any further.
It's not my understanding, the, the building department would have written that in their denial letter. And to answer your other question, the CAC has a list of, of memos they're writing for us for next month. So we're going to operate on the basis that they will get it done to help these applicants move ahead.
Okay, that's fine, but I, even though it wasn't in the denial letter, it still stands true that the town code doesn't allow a building with septic in that area. So I think that they need a variance of some kind of relief from the zoning board to put that there.
That's not a code I'm familiar with. And if it's in the zoning code, as you're saying, that's the purview of the building department, not where, our purview is wetlands applications.
Yeah, this is, this is an ongoing confusion with wetlands applications. Who's, who's looking at that line? And who is responsible for what happens between 75 foot and 100 foot? I'm hoping it's going to get resolved.
I've been told by the. I've been told by the town board that it's on their priority list to correct in the near future.
Okay, so we'll see if it's corrected before the next time you discuss either, well, this one particular application then?
I don't think it's going to apply to this application.
Okay, thank you very much.
You. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to close December 19th, 2023 planning board meeting. I'm going to ask the members to stay for legal advice. Thank you all.
Second that.
Sir.